Good, here we go. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome, as I call to order, to July 31st, special meeting of the Escambia County School Board. Whether you're joining us via live stream or in the audience, we appreciate your interest in education of the students of Escambia County. There will be a public forum session for agenda items only, including items for public hearing and the budget hearing at the beginning of the meeting. If you wish to speak to either of the forums, you must complete the appropriate form located on the table at the rear of the room and bring it forth to Ms. Harris at the front table. All speaker forms must be submitted prior to the start of a agenda public forum. This meeting was properly advertised in the Pensacola News Journal on July 25th, Legal Notice Number 10378732. At this time, we'll move to the adoption of the agenda. Mr. Superintendent, are there any changes or deletions to your recommended agenda?
There's one addition, four, finance, letter A, is added.
Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
Second.
Is it moved in second? Any discussion? No discussion, please vote by show of hands.
Approved five to zero.
We now begin the agenda public forum. All forms must be submitted at this time. I do not have any forms. So we move right into items required for public hearing. Our first item is the student progression plan. Is there a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? No discussion, please vote by show of hands.
Approved five to zero. Thank you, Ms. Morgan.
At this time, we are next, we're moving to the presentation of the 2022-2023 tentative millage and tentative budget.
Mr. St. Sears prepared to do the same review that he did last time if you need so, need for him to do so, or we can have a conversation amongst each other, whatever you so desire.
Open for discussion for the board. Hearing that, we move on to a public hearing.
Here. I'll go ahead and get it out of the way. It's not going to be any surprise because I never have voted for a tax increase since I've been on this school board, and I do not plan to do it tonight. Okay? And I would really like to see us resize this district. We cannot put that burden onto the taxpayers, what we should be doing. And the reason I do this is because I've told my constituents on my campaign cards that if you support the half-cent sales tax, I will never raise your property taxes. And they just did it again. Okay? Only nineteen schools in the state of Florida has that building, and we are blessed that are citizens because it would be a traumatic... You're talking about a budget nightmare? That would be a budget nightmare right there. So, but we've got to get back on our way to resize this district. And I heard Paul with that being the five-year plan, a five-year plan of the Roman going down to 500 every year, you know? So that we do not come to the last minute... I remember me and Paul in meetings before, we kind of wanted to know before we get to some crazy number that we're short, which I've heard several different numbers. I had people call me, tell me numbers. But that don't matter there. But anyway, I just want to let everybody know that's what I'm planning on doing is voting no on it. And I am right there with Governor Sinis. I think it's a good chance it's going to be gone next year. So you really better right-size this district because for people of homestead property, would have gone this year if the House would have cooperated. Senate was there, the governor was there. So don't act like this money is going to be there for you forever and ever because he don't like the idea of people renting, the government renting people's houses, and I don't either. So anyway, I just get that out of the way so when I vote no on these categories, you'll know.
Mr. Fetzko. Yeah, I do want to respond. Mr. Adams and I have spoken over the years in a similar manner, and that because we had the half-cent sales tax, I have never voted in favor of raising anything else. But I've never had a budget situation like we have now. Since 2000, when I, at the district level, started knowing more and more and being involved in the whole budgeting process and what's going on, I've never seen the lack of funding from Tallahassee as it is now and next year. We are in a budget crisis at this point that will cause us to have some, as I've said publicly, catastrophic situations. We don't do something ourselves, and I'm right there with you on right-sizing. I'm right there on doing things with K8. That will take a year, eighteen months at the shortest because of all those processes that have to be gone through. As you know, Adams, you've been on CESAC before. You know what it is to rezone and make those changes and everything else. But in the meantime, we have got to maintain our employees. We need, we are heading in the right direction academically. We need to show that our employees, our students, and families that we value what's going on with education. In order to keep that going, we're going to have to do something different, even if it's just for a year or two until we could get a different way of doing it and then change with what's going to happen with millage rates. But if we don't do it now, at this point, this year, then we are shooting ourselves in the foot academically and employee-wise. That's the sole reason that I'm doing it. If there was another way that we could do and have it in as, in as an expedient way as we'll need it to, you know, no one foresaw that we would have such a devastating lack of funding from Tallahassee. Okay? Yeah, the entire budget increased over last year by $1 million. Well, there's more than that just in what we need to do with benefits, what we need to do with the retirees, what we need to do with all these other things that there's no control over. So if we don't do this with the millage so that we have some flexibility to be able to maintain a improvement to our salary schedule for our employees, we won't have the employees to keep going. And I dare say that over the last two years, we have had a steady employee number. People aren't leaving us. We're not having a hard time filling, that we're doing well. And so for those reasons alone and only, I will have to vote in favor of things tonight. And I'm not trying to forego and tell people stuff. I've had the emails, I've had the phone calls, I've had the text messages, people saying, "Cut the fat." There is no fat. The only fat around here is my waist, and that's not going to get us anywhere. And, you know, people usually mean get rid of administrators. And I think that I reached out to our Assistant Superintendent and HR to get numbers as to where we stand in the state's records with the ratios of our administrators to teachers. And if I can, Mr. Superintendent, if you're okay with it, I'd like Mrs. Crosstag to give us that information.
So if you compare light counties, we are, we definitely have less administrator-to-student population. So that's something I want you to know. But I do want to say this percentage for us because I don't have specific, I don't want to name counties just because, you know, we actually have less than the next, people very close. So we have 2.5% of our entire employee group is administrators. 2.5% of who we employ are administrators. That's small. So you also need to realize that we're talking about a ratio of 1 to 280 kids if you look across the district. And if you, if you think about that, for an administrator, 1 to 280, that's a lot for one administrator to have that. Now, of course, we have different sized schools and all of that, but what we need to remember is we're talking about a ratio where we don't have fat, you know? You're having to manage a school with three people, with three administrators out of high school, I'm going to use that as an example, one principal and two APs. That's not something you see in Orange, in Osceola, in Clay, in places closer to us that I'm not going to mention. But we are, we've always paid attention to that in our county and made sure we have the way that we staff, we keep to our numbers, and we compare it to our students because the students are where the key is, you know? Making sure we have enough people to manage our student population. So is that what you want to?
Well, it is, and it leads us into, you know, we have our staffing allocation table. So schools have to earn positions. They don't just get it. Now, during the SIR funding, there were some differences, some things that were changed that happened, but those positions have dried up and moved and gone back to the classroom or somewhere else. But those no longer exist. So in order to generate, you have to have the students to do that. And when they lose those positions, they lose them because of lack of students or student enrollment. We're not, we don't have fat. We don't keep people and have positions in place without it being earned. And yes, if we quote "right-sized," there would be changes. And what would happen then is the people who were displaced would be put into vacant positions, wouldn't create new positions for it. But, but again, Mr. Adams, not argumentative, but that will take time. You know, a year to eighteen months at the earliest before we could do that kind of thing and save a portion of what the capital millage will be able to afford us in the next year to two years, and then we could look differently after we've had time to, again, do the hard work of right-sizing. But at this point, and I understand where you're coming from, I understand what you're saying philosophically, ideologically, I'm with you. Operationally, I have to worry about what will happen to our employees and then our students for lack of employees. We've been down there when we couldn't fill positions. I don't want to create vacancies. I don't want to have things unfilled. I don't want to have a student going through an entire year with sub after sub after sub. And not that subs don't work hard and do what they can, but it makes a difference. We know that, we've seen that. Our academics, our grades have continued to improve, and I do not want to have that disrupted. And I understand that this is very unpopular, and I'll be quiet.
Ms. Bergaush.
I too am going to support this. I am, I'm not saying I'm for a tax increase, but I really am so pleased to see the growth of our district moving in such a positive manner with that superintendent, his staff, and all of our teachers diligently working. I want to continue that momentum. Are there areas where they can look at cutting? I think they've done a lot already, and they will continue to do that. I trust they will, that they will continue. But just to do some statistics, looking at the counties in Florida, all sixty-seven, eight of them prioritize less than 1.5 mills. And majority of those eight are very high value property rates, values, I guess I'd say. 1.5, we haven't assessed that before in our district, 2017, and I know that we decreased after that. I don't know why. But I want to ensure that this district moves in a positive direction. Is it going to happen overnight? No, it's not. But, you know, we're slowly but surely gathering that strength. If we look at counties, even neighboring counties, they also assess 1.5. So I'm asking the community, I heard this on my brother-in-law's radio show about eating broccoli. And right now, broccoli, I love broccoli, but as a kid, I didn't like it. But you're saying having to eat that broccoli, but in hopes one day we're going to eat that steak or that dessert. So right now, we have to eat our broccoli or another vegetable, whatever you don't like. So it takes all of us a team approach.
Ms. Harris. This is a very tough decision, but it's also a tough spot we're in here, as Mr. Fetzko pointed out. This is, and this is something that has happened over a period of time, and we probably could have weathered this storm had we not had such a drastic reduction in funds for this year. We got hit with a federal reduction, and we're getting some of that back. And we also got hit with the FTE reduction. And when you, when you see it on paper, oh, gosh, we've got a million dollars. We don't have a million dollars. I heard Mr. St. Sears say that most of that's going to be taken up with increased retirement benefits the other night when we were talking. I am a strong, strong conservative, ladies and gentlemen, and a week ago, my mind was set up to vote no for this, I can tell you. And I'm being just honest with you. You know, I've talked to a number of people. Over this week, my mind has changed, you know, for a whole variety of reasons. One of the things Ms. Bergaush said was that there were eight counties that did not, I looked very closely at that, and she's right. And most of those counties, except one, are property-rich, you know? Or either they have an additional half-cent referendum for teacher salaries. So the other thing I looked at was the same thing Ms. Bergaush looked at, and that was, when was the last time we assessed 1.5? That 1.5 was assessed in 2017, 2018. And you look at each year, if there was a stabilized tax base or we increased, and the public did get some benefits from that, from us not assessing that 1.5. But now, it's my belief we're in a critical position here. I'm, as I said, I'm a strong financial conservative, and it was hard, it was hard for me to work back and forth through this. Had a lengthy conversation with Ms. Crosstag today also, and a lengthy conversation with the superintendent the other day about this. I've got to go back and face one of the most conservative districts in this county and tell them why I voted to raise taxes. And I'm going to tell them this, I did it for the children, you know? I did it for the district, you know? I did it because it was the right thing to do at this time and this place. Let me look at my notes here. You know, we're going to have an increase in tax, it's going to show on the paper, an increase in tax, even if we, even if we vote no today, except for that, well, let me back up. That area where the required local effort, it's going to, there's, I don't think there's any way we can not do that because of the penalties on the other end. So as a result of that, what's going to happen is we're going to show a tax increase anyway. I've had close relatives call me and say some of the same things, just cut all them administrators. You could cut all of the administrators and it wouldn't make this deficit up, you know? And even if we, what we do today, what we do today, there's still a risk, if I hear Mr. St. Sears correctly, there's still a risk of us having our general fund, you know, stay at the percentages we needed to stay at. Is that correct, Mr. St. Sears? So even if we do what we're doing today, you know, there's going to be an issue there. We continue to face decline in enrollment. And ladies and gentlemen, we have got to deal with this. We don't need to deal with it with the opening of the school. We want the opening of the school to be as positive as it can be. We want everything with the opening of the school to be, you know, uplifting so that we, our teachers are starting, our children are starting. But come about January, there's some things that need to change, you know? And one of those things is to deal with this decline in enrollment. It's not going away. The scholarship, the federal government has just recently said and passed in the big beautiful bill that they're going to give incentives to those people who are homeschool and so forth. I don't know how that's, what it's going to look like, but that incentive made me enough to put even a larger number of people into the pool that are going to homeschool. We've got to take things like that into consideration. The other thing is that we are a county that is long and narrow. We have some smaller schools, larger schools, but we have some smaller schools that did not used to have some extra administration. Well, I won't go into all the specifics. We have some, we have, our student population is growing in the north and the west, and we're, we've got to do some things to look there. They just sold the property across from Millina Elementary School, and a builder bought that. There's 500 acres there. There are going to be 1,000 homes there, you know? Before it's over with, there are going to be 1,000 homes. I'm sure on the west side of the town, it's the same way. We've got to do everything that we can to match our budget to our student. We cannot let, like, happen in the past, and I'm not throwing darts at previous boards or anything like that. We cannot let that happen. This, it needs to start this January, looking at that, our personnel documents that we get, the projections and so forth. We've got to look at this, and we've got to more closely match. And I'm not saying anything about the superintendent and what they have or have not done. This was an unfortunate, this was an unfortunate thing that happened to us for this year. The other thing I had on my list was that I fully support the superintendent of schools. Y'all all know that, you know? So having said that, he has presented us a plan to help solve this financial situation, and I support that, you know? Let me see what else they write here. As I said, I've heard from many people, and this is a very complex, this is a very complex issue, but the bottom line is, and I've said this my entire 37-year career, is this what's best for the boys and girls it's placing in our care? And I believe it is. All right, said enough.
Thank you. And I just said this, and we'll move on. I've often said we don't toot our horn at the great job that we've been doing for the past twenty-something years. I've been in the administrative situation where at the end of the eight or the ten-day count where I had to let teachers go because we didn't have enough students to cover that teaching. We've been cutting back for years. We've been making do with less for years, and I think the public needs to understand this is nothing new to us. This is a means of last resort. We wouldn't do this if we didn't have to. So we've been cutting back for years, the senior staff and the administration for the past few years, been cutting and cutting and cutting. And I've been that administrator that received less units each year, and we had to make a, figure out a way to make it work. But right now, we don't have any other choice, I believe, other than do what's best for our students, and we'll take the brunt of that because that's why we have been elected to be put in this position. And if we're not man enough to do that right now, then we probably shouldn't be in this position. Let's do what's best for the students of Escambia County. Let's move on. We've already had the hearing on the agenda items, and we're moving into the millage rates. Next item is item C, tentative millage required local effort. Is there a motion?
So moved.
A second.
Is it moved in second? Any discussion? Please vote by show of hands. Yes, sir, Mr. Superintendent.
Mr. Adams. Did you want to vote yes? Okay. So, yes. So you voted yes on C? Okay. I just didn't want to, remember, you and I agree on 95% of everything. Yes, that passed five to zero, so I'll pay close attention.
Okay, that was C, item C, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And that's five, zero. Item D, tentative millage prior period funding adjustment. Is there a motion?
I move to adopt the 2025-2026-
I move the, to adopt the 2025-2026 prior period funding adjustment of 0.007.
And I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Yes.
And I wanna explain, explain to the public what that conversation was. The only thing this board can change, the only thing it can change is that one 1.5 millage. Everything else is set by the state.
Right.
We're gonna go through the dog and pony show of just voting on these, even though it's gonna be done, okay? So.
Thank you for that explanation, you're absolutely correct.
I believe we discussed that.
Yes, sir.
Yes, we did. Uh, that was a discussion, let's please vote.
Approved five to zero.
Next we have item E, tentative millage and discretionary operating, is there a motion?
I move the adoption of the 2025-2026 discretionary operating at 0.748.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? No discussion, please vote.
Passes five to zero.
Next item is item F, tentative millage, capital improvement, is there a motion?
I'll move that we adopt the tentative millage for our local capital improvement.
I'll second.
Any discussion? No discussion, please vote.
Approved four to one.
Next item is item G, tentative millage, total millage, is there a motion?
I move to adopt the 25-26 local capital improvement.
No, it's, it's, it's total millage.
Total millage, G.
I'm looking at the wrong one, totally lost, I'm sorry. Do I need to say it again?
Yes.
Okay, I move to adopt the 25-26 total millage.
How much is it?
It's 1.5.
1.5.
Five point.
Five point three.
Total millage.
Oh, 5.399. 5.9. See, I don't have my glasses on.
And I don't have my earnet, so we're a pair now.
We're a pair.
5.359 is what Ms. Burgas said.
Can we get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Please vote by show of hands.
Passes four to one.
Next item is item H, tentative budget, general funding, is there a motion?
I move to adopt the 2025-2026 general fund in the amount of $400,849,570.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Please vote.
Approved four to zero. Excuse me, four to one.
Four to one.
Numbers are killing me today.
Next we have tentative budget, food service, is there a motion?
I move that we adopt the 2025-26 tentative budget, special revenue for food services.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? No discussion, please vote.
Passes five to zero.
Next is item J, tentative budget, other federal programs, is there a motion?
I move to adopt the 2025-2026 special revenue, other federal programs at $45,477, no, $45,477,800.
I second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? No discussion, please vote.
Approved five to zero.
Next item is item K, tentative budget, other C-R-R-S-A slash G-E-E-R two, is there a motion?
I move that we adopt the 225-2026 tentative special revenue for C-R-R-S-A slash G-E-E-R two.
I'll second.
And any discussion? No discussion, please vote.
Passes five to zero.
Next item is item L, tentative budget, debit services funds, is there a motion?
I move to adopt the 25-26 tentative budget debt service fund in the amount of $87,520,270.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Please vote.
Approved five to zero.
Next item is item M, tentative budget, capital projects funds, is there a motion?
I move to adopt the 2025-2026 capital projects funds in the amount of $228,760,928.
I second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Please vote.
Approved four to one.
Okay, next item is item N, tentative budget, internal services, is there a motion?
I move to adopt the 2025-2026 internal service budget of $58,678,000. I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? No discussion, please vote.
Approved five to zero.
Item L, tentative budget, total budget, is there a motion?
I move that we adopt the 225-226 tentative total budget. Do I need an amount?
Yes.
All right, help me out, Mr. St. Seer, where? All right, $856,115,363.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion?
Thank you, Chris.
No discussion, please vote.
Approved four to one.
Next we have the resolution number 2026 dash 01, adopting a tentative millage rate, is there a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
Any discussion? No discussion, please vote.
Approved four to one.
Next we have item Q, resolution number 2026 dash 02, adopting a tentative budget, is there a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Please vote.
Approved four to one.
Anything else for the good of the, the meeting? Any comments? Yes, sir.
I just wanted to make one last comment. I noticed on my list here, forgot something, and it's not that I wanna have the last word, but I'm gonna have the last word, hopefully. One of the things that I talked to Ms. is, unless Kevin, I missed Adam's. Okay, I appreciate it. I, I had some lengthy conversations with the superintendent and Kevin, I just wanna thank them for, you know, they were very productive. And one of the things I asked Mrs. Crosstag was that we're holding some positions, and she said yes. I know the superintendent's holding one of his own. There are numerous administrative positions in, in all the departments that are being held, you know, already. So going back to what Mr. Williams said earlier was we, we're already doing some of the things that are necessary for us to do to move this district forward financially, but ladies and gentlemen, we have to do more. We have to have a budget that keeps us, our general fund that keeps the surplus. And, and, and I think we'll move in even more in the right direction come about January when we look at some of these things that we need to do. Now, hush.
Uh, Ms. Chair, in District One, well, it, it was a tragic thing for the whole county. We lost a very good man the other day, and Jesse Casey, he, he passed away, and it was over something that you wouldn't think would, it would happen, and, but it did happen. And he was a guy that would come over and dig a ditch if you needed help digging a ditch, or people have a horse pass away, and he'd bring his, his equipment and bury the horse. I mean, he, he, he served the public. His funeral was day, I, I couldn't get to it, but, but my prayers go out to his family and, and his wife, and I wish them the best, but yeah, we, we lost a, we lost a good man today, or yesterday.
Mr. Williams, I just wanna remind one, one thing. So tomorrow, our teachers come back to work, and we won't have the opportunity to meet again before our students come back. So August 11th be our first day of school, we'll get a report here, probably first part of next week, I believe Transportation's ready to go, we'll be at their in-service training, I believe that's August the, the 6th, but we are ready for a really good start, and we just wanna tell all of you, thank you for the assistance you provided us. Thank you.
I was gonna shut up, but I won't. You, you brought it out, Mr. Superintendent, Transportation, how are we with filling all those positions?
Mr. Dennis, you wanna tell them, tell them the same conversation you and I had today?
Yes, sir, I had a conversation with the director today, and we have, yesterday was the route bid, we had 10 routes that were not bid on, but we have enough capacity in the remaining routes to absorb those routes into existing routes, we call that washing routes, so that we are positioned where we have every route covered for the first day of school without our route managers on the road, barring influenza or some act of God that takes a few of them out. And we also have 10 additional drivers in the pipeline on top of the ones that are starting. We have about 5% of our drivers will be brand-new drivers the first time, the first school year this year, but we are optimistic that it looks very, very positive compared to years past.
Um, Mr. Chair, the, out in Beulah, we have a road that's closed right now, Beulah Road, so I'm asking all my District One citizens, you know, to have patience because they reroute the traffic down Rebel Road. I've already talked to Kyle about it, he said he's gonna be out there watching, but it, it should be, there's only one way to go, really, and it is that way. And so everybody needs to have patience and leave early, and hopefully they'll get that road back open soon.
I would just like to ask Ms. Crosstag, do we have all our teaching positions filled?
We're ready. We do not have all of them filled, but where we do not have them filled, I mean, we're filling like crazy right now and, and getting people in. I would say this is the best we've filled in 10 years. And where we don't have that, we've got some permanent subs, some subs, and the subs are there, some of them, until we get the fingerprints back, because I, you can't, I don't know if you remember, well, we went to the state database, and that's coming back slower and slower as we get closer to school starting. So we have them out there, we're bringing them in as fast as we can. We hired several today, we had, we're, we're turning around, if we have any last-minute resignations, we're turning those around very quickly. So I'm very pleased with all that.
Is the foreign teacher program going on pretty good too, or is it?
It is, it's going great. They went to great beginnings yesterday and today, and they were all on-boarded, they're ready to go, and they are in place.
Thank you, Ms.
Anything else? Okay, nothing else, this meeting's adjourned.